...the joint meeting between the Costa Mesa Sanitary District Board of Directors and Citizens Advisory Committee. Couple of quick housekeeping items. I was reminded to remind you all, when you make comments or when you need to bring something up, make sure you speak into the microphone because we do record it. As a special district, we record everything that we do for the public. So, please make sure that you speak into the microphone and if you need to identify yourself, although I'm not sure that's totally necessary. At this time, I'm going to ask the clerk to do a roll call of all participants.
Dr. Arthur Perry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Rubin.
Here.
Secretary Arlen Schaefer.
Present.
Vice President James Carman.
Present.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here. Okay.
Chair Mike Carey.
Here.
Assistant Chair Albert Graham Jr.
Here.
Andrew Nielsen.
Present.
Mike McElroy.
Here.
Juan Su Feels.
Present.
Bill Marsh.
Present.
Sue Lester.
Here.
Tom Brenneman.
Here.
Shane Smith.
Here.
Thank you all. This is the time in the meeting now that we'll ask for public comments. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak on items that are within our purview or subject matter jurisdiction, not listed on the agenda. Seeing no one from the public coming up to speak, we are going right into Item C, the public hearing, and I will ask our general manager, Scott Carroll, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to actually turn this over to District Counsel Alan Burns, and he's going to start off with a presentation, and he's also going to introduce our demographer, Deborah Depp, who will be giving a presentation about the proposed maps.
I'll officially call the public hearing to order. Thank you, Alan.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board, and Chair Carey, and members of the committee. I'm Alan Burns. I'm district counsel, and I'm going to give you the introduction to the Federal and State Voting Rights Act, after which you're going to hear from our demographer, Deborah Depp, who will be giving you more of the particulars on the map and how it works. So I'm going to be speaking about both the Federal and State Voting Rights Act. There are two different laws. The first was the federal law, and that was adopted in 1965, and it was amended in 1982 to prohibit vote dilution, and you'll be hearing more about that. And the Federal Voting Rights Act uses a totality of the circumstances test to see if race is a factor in elections. But more importantly for us, we have the California Voting Rights Act, which was adopted in 2003, and it makes it much easier to be successful in challenging an at-large district and created a private right of action, meaning private persons can bring a lawsuit. It eliminated the requirement that the minority group demonstrate that it's sufficiently large and geographically compact to constitute a majority-minority district. Majority-minority means the lesser group or the usually it's going to be the racial or the ethnic minority is the majority. That is not required to be proven in a California action. California law starts out by saying that an at-large method, and that's what we have in this district where people are, our directors are voted at-large within the district, and there are not divisions. It's going to be a little confusing. I'm going to say division when I mean we're going to cut up the district. Otherwise, they use the word district, but it's confusing with a special district. So let's use the word district and division. We have an at-large method of election, and the law provides it may not be imposed or applied in any manner if it impairs the ability of a protected class to elect candidates of its choice or its ability to influence the outcome of an election as a result of dilution or abridgement of rights of voters who are members of a protected class as defined, basically racial/ethnic minorities are protected class. What this means is that racially polarized voting is, if it can be proven in an at-large election, then you have a prima facie case for a violation. Racially polarized voting occurs when there's a difference between the choice of candidates' preferences by voters in a protected class and those in the other, the rest of the electorate. And it can either be in electing their candidates of choice or their other electoral choices. And that's the, really, the undefined area of the law. We don't have an appellate case on it, but it goes beyond whether or not you can elect your own candidate. And the way this plays into our, what we're trying to do here is that the plaintiff attorney has suggested that if he can show that people in a protected class might have voted differently than the rest of the district on propositions such as 187 and 209 and 227, which had things to do like affirmative action, bilingual education, and denying benefits to somebody who cannot demonstrate legal residence, then if you can show that difference, then you've proven racially polarized voting. This creates a very low bar for prevailing. In other words, they have a very easy case to prove. Although we don't have any appellate cases, we have lots of trial cases. And unfortunately, they all go against districts that have thought maybe the law meant something else. And the Modesto case, $4.7 million in attorney's fees. The Palmdale case, a very famous case, $4.5 million in attorney's fees. Locally, Anaheim has spent $1.1 million. Woodyer spent $1 million, and Santa Barbara spent $800,000. And those were all, of course, meaning they lost the case, and then they had to pay the fees on top. To do a division, we have to, and you'll be charged with, along with Deborah's advice to you, coming up with population fairness within your divisions, and you can consider things like topography and geography and cohesiveness and community of interest. And those are some interesting concepts that Deborah will probably be talking more about. So the courts even seem to bless not setting up one candidate running against another and your existing, with your existing board members. So there is some flexibility there. What we're operating under so far, and this doesn't mean we're committed to it, but there is some, a relief provision enacted that, once we get the letter from the lawyer and the law firm that is going to challenge us, and believe me, we're not the only person that gets this letter. It's, a lot of agencies have gotten this letter. They send the letter out challenging the voting system, and then the law, this new reform law, provides that they have to wait 45 days before they file a lawsuit. And after the 45 days, the public agency can pass a resolution of intention indicating that they intend to transition to district-based elections or division-based elections in our case. And if the agency adopts such a resolution, we then have 90 days to adopt an ordinance transitioning, and it requires some specific things. Two public hearings before the maps are drawn, two public hearings after the maps are drawn, and then the adoption of an ordinance that implements the divisions. And if we follow that procedure, the plaintiff's recovery is capped at $30,000, which he still has to prove, but, you know, otherwise it can be quite a bit more. Like I said, they have to, they still have to substantiate that they did do the work and that they ran up a $30,000 bill, and then we're required to reimburse them within 45 days. I think that's all I have for now. You can either ask questions now, or you might want to wait till Deborah Depp comes up, and she'll maybe fill in some blanks and answer some questions for you. And I'll be available to answer questions at the end of Deborah's. Deborah? Deborah is a demographer from Cal State Fullerton, the center there, and she's worked on many of these cases, so she's very knowledgeable about this field. Thank you, Mr. President, and Chair.
Thanks.
Hello. My name's Deborah Depp. I'm the Director of the Center for Demographic Research at Cal State Fullerton. I'm here to give you the background demographic information for the district, and really, it's the starting point for all things districting and redistricting possible. So you'll hear the districting and redistricting sometimes interchangeably. Districting is when you haven't created board-director divisions or trustee areas or districts for council members, and redistricting is the process where you already have those districts and then you're readjusting those boundaries. So forgive me if sometimes I slip back into and say, "mention districting," but again, like Alan mentioned, when we're talking about director divisions, those are those potential divisions or the areas that the board would be transitioning into. Because you're a special district, it's usually, we usually use that term "division" for the board of director areas. So we'll move right into the 2010 census redistricting data. So the core and the primary data file that's used in all redistricting efforts is from the US Census Bureau. It's called the Public Law File 94-171 Redistricting Data. So again, it's called Redistricting Data, but it's also used for districting purposes. The data consists of data that was developed from the federal decennial census, which occurs on April 1st every 10 years. So the last one was from April 1st, 2010. The next one is in just a couple of years, April 1st, 2020. And we do actually use the same data set for the full 10 years. So we know that this is an eight-year-old data set, but by law, this is the file that's used, so this is what we're going to use. The fun thing to note, too, is if you do switch over to director divisions, you're going to, every 10 years after the decennial census data comes out, you're going to want to look at those boundaries and see if you have population equity within each of those divisions because the cities grow, the jurisdictions grow, the agency may change its boundaries, so you always want to take a look at that. So again, with that data, we're looking at the total population by racial and ethnic groups, and it also has the breakdown by racial and ethnic groups for the population that's 18 and over, because those are the ones that are of age to vote. The data is all online and publicly available. And then we also have another file called the CVAP. There's not a whole lot of acronyms in redistricting, but CVAP is one of them. This is the citizens' voting age population. It's calculated from the US Census Bureau's American Community Survey. This survey replaced what was called the long form in the federal decennial census. Every household gets, or at least previous, prior to the 2010 census, you had what was called the short form and the long form. The short form was just about 10 questions, nice, simple little paper. The long form was pages and pages long. What the Congress decided to do was to have more data more often, and so they switched to this thing called the American Community Survey. It goes out to about 250,000 households every month across the nation, and they collect that data. They publish one-year data, but then for the data set that we're going to be using, the secondary data set, it's called the five-year rolling average, and it's released at what's called the block group level. So all of the census data is released in different types of geographies called census blocks. Those blocks are aggregated up into block groups, and that's the data that we're going to be looking at. The data won't match those 2010 census data counts because it is a five-year rolling average, but what they take from this data set is they actually estimate the number of US citizens that are 18 and over. So you're looking at that population that's eligible to vote, because only US citizens 18 and over are eligible to vote. So again, this data is available online, and this is the secondary data set that some of the maps and data you'll be looking at will include. And before I go any further, I just want to make sure that it's clear to everyone who's listening or watching that the district boundaries are what we're providing the data for, and those district boundaries are not contiguous with the city of Costa Mesa. So even though you're called the Costa Mesa Sanitary District, we need to recognize that the boundaries for the district are not the same as the city boundaries all the way around. You include some of the portions outside of the actual city of Costa Mesa, so the data that you will be seeing will include all the area for the district. So again, we're going to start with the federal 2010 decennial census. The total population for the district is about 116,000, 176 people. And again, district boundaries, not just the service area. When you break out, oh, okay, if we have that, you have, this is why we have handouts, because you never know what's going to happen with a PowerPoint presentation. We also have in a PDF, but still, you have it there. 53.2% non-Hispanic white population in the district, 34.6% Hispanic and Latino of any race, 7.6% non-Hispanic Asian, 1.2% non-Hispanic Black or African-American, and 3.4% of all other non-Hispanic races and ethnicities. So if we take a look at the racial/ethnic breakdown throughout the district, we have standardized the following maps so that we're looking at an equal comparison for each of the intervals. So this map is for the non-Hispanic white population. The darker pinks are where the non-Hispanic whites have a larger share of the block group population. And so in the darkest pink, these are where the areas where the non-Hispanic whites are 80% or more of the block group population. This map shows where the share of Hispanic and Latinos are in different concentrations at that same block group level. In the darkest green areas on the map, south of, if I can point it out, if you can see a little, in the southwest portion of the city, this is west of Harbor, south of the Stancia High School. These areas have the highest concentration and the largest share of Hispanic or Latinos of the block group populations. And in about seven of those block groups, Hispanic and Latinos have a share above 80% of the block group population. And in only 15 of all of the block groups in the district, 15 have, 50% or greater of the block group population. When we take a look at the distribution of non-Hispanic Asians in the district, in all but three block groups, the non-Hispanic Asians have a share of less than 20%, except for those three in the darker color in the northern part of the district. In the one that's, I think you could pick it out, the most obvious, there's actually only two people reported by the Census Bureau in that block group, and both of those reported that they were non-Hispanic Asians. So 100% of that block group population is Asian. When we look at the non-Hispanic Black or African-American populations throughout the district, it may look like there's something wrong with the map. There isn't. It's because we're using, again, those same percentage intervals and shares for all of the maps, and none of the block groups have a share of non-Hispanic Blacks that are greater than 4.3% in the whole district. So it is all one color because the Black population is only about 1.5% of the district population, and they're spread throughout the district. Same thing for the non-Hispanic all other. We're looking at 4.7% of the whole district population, but in all of the block groups within the district, the share of this group is no greater than 7.3% of the whole population for, for each block group throughout the district, so we'll have the same share. Because these two last groups have a population threshold so low, we're actually going to focus on the other three as we move forward. So when we take a look at the citizen voting age population, and the one that's going to get posted online, will have all those values in there, won't be a surprise. 64.1% non-Hispanic white, 21.7 Hispanic or Latino, 9.2% non-Hispanic Asian, 2.1% non-Hispanic Black, and 3% of all other non-Hispanic races and ethnicities. So when we look at the distribution of the CVAP population or the citizen voting age population for the non-Hispanic whites, it looks very similar to the population distribution we saw for the total population. Hispanic and Latinos have a similar distribution of share of the block group population, but they're not as high as they were for the, as the total, because, one, they tend to be a younger population, and overall, not as many are US citizens. So they'll have lower concentrations within each of the block group shares. And then again, for the non-Hispanic Asians, again, we see a similar distribution, but there's a couple more block groups that have higher percentages or shares of the population that are of age to vote and are citizens. So then back to the districting process itself. When we look at districting and creating divisions for the board, we start with the total population for the district, again, as of the last decennial census. So the district population was about 116,000, 176 people, and the goal of districting is to have equal, or as nearly equal, population as you can possibly have in each of the director divisions. So we take that total population, and we divide it by the number of board members, easy, five, and we come up with a target population of about 23,235 people. So it's not always possible to actually hit that exact number, but you want to get as near to it as is possible. And so here's just an example of a sample plan. It really doesn't mean anything, made up the numbers, but just for demonstration purposes. So in this one, we have Division 1, total population of 24,211 people. It's 976 people above that target population, so it's 4.2% greater than the target population. Division 2, or sample Division 2, 22,306 people. It's 929 people below that target population, so it's 4% under the target population. I think you get the idea. So here, this is the same information, but it's in a bar chart. So when we're looking at this, we know that Division 2 was 4% under, and what we want to look at is the population spread among the different divisions. So you want to look at the lowest of the low and the highest of the high. So the lowest division here in this sample is we have Division 2 at 4% under that population target. We have Division 3 at 4.8% above the target. And then what we want to do is we want to add those together, so dig way back down to maybe elementary school math, absolute values. You want to take the absolute values of the high and the low, so the negative 4 converts into a positive 4. You add that with the 4.8%, and you get 8.8% population spread. Generally, the rule of thumb is you want to have the population spread between the director divisions be under 10%. It doesn't have to be equal 5 and 5. It can be just like this, 4.8. It can be a 3 and a 7, but generally, you want to keep it under 7. There's no rule or court hearing or outcome from a court case that has said 10%, it has to be less than this, but you want to be able to explain what the differences are, and you want to just kind of keep it under 10. So the primary goal of districting is to have the director divisions have as nearly equal as population as possibly can be, but as Alan mentioned, you can give consideration to additional factors, because, again, you can't count one person. You have to deal first and foremost with the districting data set. But you can consider things like topography, geography. So you want to look and see if there's natural breaks that occur within the district. It could be freeways, it could be mountains, it could be a stream, it could be a creek, it could be any kind of feature that you have that you would say, "this is a good break to have a director division." These other ones, cohesiveness, continuity, integrity, and compactness of territory, you want to look and make sure that, is the whole director division, it's all connected? You don't want to have an island over here and an island over here. It's got to all be connected. You want it to be compact. You don't want it to look like it's this thing with tentacles and an octopus, which may be cool, your favorite animal, but not so good when it comes to districting processes. And then communities of interest. Your district is broken up and has, or not necessarily broken up, but is combined with, has multiple cities within it. You might want to be able to say, "all of Costa Mesa is in three different divisions," or "the portions that are in New Parvita are in one division." You can do things like that. You could have things like HOAs that you could consider. Whatever it is that you have down here, if there's something that you think is interesting and is a community that, of interest that you would want to keep together, you want to, you can take a look at those and make those suggestions. So what we're doing here is we're really at the beginning of this process, and we're here to, as Alan mentioned, again, there's five public hearings that are scheduled, and so we're here to just start the discussion. It's really to get the juices flowing and for you to consider different things. We're also here to help solicit the public to provide input as well. So as in any public hearing, the public can always provide public comments, but we also wanted to facilitate a way for people to provide input. So there's going to be three ways that is going to be posted online on the district website for download. It's called an idea form, a map, and then an Excel table for the more detailed folks. Map proposals, along with that timeline, we want them to be submitted by June 8th, so we can package them together for your third public hearing, and the kit is going to be available for download on your website. They have a districting page, if you haven't already been there. It's all set up and ready to go with more information. And so the first one, the idea form, comment form, idea form, whatever it is, the public or members of the committees can provide information. If you have an idea, whatever it is, you think districting's a good idea, great, write it down, let us know. If you think districting is not a good idea, great, let us know, whatever it is. If you have an idea that you want to consider HOAs, or where the dog parks are, or whatever it is, you can provide those ideas. You can describe maps, you can describe divisions, you can provide whatever types of comments you want, and you just fill out the form, and you send to the district clerk the instructions for submitting the information are all at the bottom of each of the, are included in each of the forms. The second one is a map. Easy enough. You just take a look at the map, and you can start drawing on the map. We have this map of the district broken up into what are called block groups, and the red are the numbers or IDs, which we'll also supplement for the Excel file. But there's about 80 block groups within the district, and then the black numbers are the population within each of those block groups. So you take out a calculator and you just start adding up, once you get to that 23,235 or somewhere around there, roughly, again, plus or minus 5% is between 22,073 people and the 24,397, so written on the map. You draw your boundaries, you can color them in, whatever you'd like. You label them 1 through 5, and then you scan it, take a picture of it, snap a picture with your phone, email it to the clerk, drop it off, fax it, whatever you want to do. If you choose to fax it, though, please do not use a light-colored highlighter. Please bust out that nice black Sharpie and do, just color it in, because it won't show up unless you take a picture of it, but if you scan it, sometimes that won't work, so just nice, thick, black marker works well. These are just samples, didn't add anything up, so these are not suggestions for boundaries. I can just tell right off, though, that I just started drawing lines. They don't mean anything, and they'll be wildly off when it comes to the population spread. So, yeah, this is just a sample of things to do. The Excel file, for those folks that are more detailed and like numbers, like me, you can take that map that you have that has those block ID numbers, and the Excel file is a way to, that'll automatically calculate it out for you. It doesn't draw a map for you, but it'll automatically tabulate the numbers for you. So within that Excel file, we have an instruction sheet, author information that you can provide, contact information, something called an assignment spreadsheet, summary spreadsheet, and then the blank reference map. So the map is also embedded into the file. This is what that Excel, the third tab called the assignment spreadsheet, looks like. Yes, it's small, I know this, but it's for sample purposes right now. So what you do is, in the yellow, you just take that map, and I'm going to say, numbers, block groups 1 through 10, I'm going to put those in Division 1, and then it will calculate at the top, it'll automatically calculate the population for that director division. You number, as you go all the way down, all the ones in yellow. There's a counter up here at the top that says you have 80, or 69, or 1, or 0 block groups to assign, so it keeps reminding you to make sure that you've assigned all 80. And then there's also a spreadsheet that basically shows you all the totals. So this one has a bunch of null values in there, if you will, because I was just using the sample for the first 20 or so. But it will come up, and it will show you the population for each of the director divisions, the breakout by race/ethnicity for each of the divisions, and then also the population shares. So if you're trying to get a share of a certain group to be higher or lower, you can do that within the Excel file. We also have it ready to go if people wanted to see how it works, but it's actually pretty simple, but it's just an Excel file you just pop it open. So again, we're asking for anything that has to do with the maps, to have those map proposals submitted to the district clerk by June 8th. Email, fax, drop off the hard copy. We don't do the smoke signals and dropping off through the plane. There's no drone receiving information yet, but she's here to answer questions, as is the district counsel, if you have any questions. And then the proposed timeline that we have so far, the draft timeline, is today receiving information yet, but she's here to answer questions, as is the district council, if you have any questions. And then the proposed timeline that we have so far, the draft timeline, is today we have this joint meeting, public hearing number one. The CAC is going to meet next week at public hearing number two. We have the deadline to submit the maps as June 8th, which is next Friday. We need to publish those maps for public consumption a week before your third public hearing, which is June 20th. That's why we need to have all of the maps, at least the first drafts of the maps, by June 8th. And then, so the CAC will meet for public hearings two, three, and four, and you'll make those considerations. If there's any revisions to the maps that we are either directed to make, or somehow we have those provided to us, we would have those for you at your July 18 meeting, and it's expected, as I understand, that the CAC would make a recommendation or provide input into the board at their July 18 meeting, and then the board would have the fifth public hearing on July 26 in coordination with their regular monthly meeting that they would have on the 26th. So the districting schedule is also online and published, too, and then the website will be updated by the clerk as new information is posted or received. All that information will also be made available. So we know it's a lot to digest. It's a lot of information. At least, I can say, I love my numbers, but we have it in map format. Maps always make things a lot easier to use and make things more interesting. The first thing I always do is, you know, "Where do I live on the map?" type of thing. So if you have any questions, I'm available, as is staff and council.
Can we do questions now?
Sure.
Are the five of us, we can ask questions as well. I have two. Explain to me a little more about the communities' interest part of it. I'm, that's kind of a gray area for me. Does that mean it's not ethnic or racially based interest? It's got to be something else? You know, one of the criteria?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
It can be. There's a, I will definitely defer all legal to legal, but communities of interest, it is very broad and very vague. So it can mean different things. You can have a community that has a shared interest that is diverse in its racial and ethnic. You can also have a community of interest that has a shared racial or ethnic group. So it's, you can use race ethnicity as a proxy, and that's usually how it's done, unfortunately, especially if you're looking at the national level. Racial and ethnic diversity is used as a proxy for political party, but most of the cities in Orange County and the special districts are nonpartisan, so that's usually not something that takes into case. But racial and ethnic groups can be a community of interest, but again, it can be school district boundaries, attendance boundaries, HOAs. There's all sorts of different. If you have a special district within cities, sometimes they have an entertainment corridor or the resort district, St. Disneyland type of thing. So there's also, if you have the fairgrounds, some people want, I want, I'd like to have the fairgrounds in my backyard, whatever it is.
I think where I was going more was like, say, all the people at Kaiser School that attend the Kaiser School District, could that be considered a community?
Yeah.
Interest type thing?
Mm-hmm. And so if you did, if those maps weren't available, if we needed to add a couple of maps that showed school district boundaries or something like that, we could, we could throw those out.
And my second question is, and I guess I'll go to Ellen, what if a community, what if this group, or what if the community says, "Eh, we don't want districts. We want to keep it the way it is at large." What, how does that affect Mr. Shankman and the lawyers and all those people?
Well, there was one of the cases that did try that, and they submitted it to the voters, and the voters said, "We don't like this. We don't want it." And they, so they didn't, and then they got a judgment against them, and the judge imposed the districts on them.
So we really, all of us really have one choice? Go to districts?
Yeah. If the case is proven, you have to, you have to do a remedy, and this is the only remedy that kind of meets the test so far.
Okay.
And another, just to add one other example to your question about the cohesiveness of a community of interest, it might be like in Newport Beach, you might say, "The people of Balboa think they're special in a tight community," or the people of Newport Coast would say, "We're, we're special."
Okay. Thank you. Absolutely.
I have a question.
I have a couple, actually.
Talk into the black part at the top.
Okay. Sorry about that. Microphones for dummies. Is there going to be a section on the website where someone can populate frequently asked questions if we get them? For instance, this being the main question I'm thinking, is we have a water district. They're divided in sections. I'm sure people are going to wonder, "Why don't we just mirror their districts?" Now, after what you told us, I can assume it's a number of things, being that they've been that way for a while. They go off different information. I don't know, but considering that the water district wanted to merge with this entity, I think that would be an important piece of information to have, like, what are their districts in relation to what we're supposed to do for these districts? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. So they probably have different district boundaries, so different agency boundaries, so they have a different total population, a different target size population. So it's likely that you couldn't have the exact same director divisions that they have. I'm sure that the, because this is, again, the beginning of the process, so we can help compile a frequently asked questions page, and that's very common. I don't know if the district clerk has it up there yet, but I know she has a bunch of information already populated on the website, but simple things like that, easy enough to do, is get a copy of that agency's director divisions and post it on yours for reference as an FAQ.
One of the hard things about that, if I might interject, is, like we mentioned at the first meeting, our, our boundaries are different
Right.
than Mesa Waters, totally different. And to my knowledge, even though Deborah said this earlier, that with every census, you're supposed to relook at your districts. My dad worked for the Mesa Water District starting in 1958, and when they became, consolidated, and they broke into districts, that's when they formed their boundaries. I think that was a long time ago. They've never changed their boundaries, to my knowledge.
1960.
In 1960s, when they formed the divisions. So they've had the same districts, as far as we know, since then.
Well, and that's where I think having that information is extremely appropriate, because I didn't know that, and I even, I've come here
That's an easy deal.
to announce things that people are, would naturally ask, I think, but don't know anything. Like, "Why are you reinventing the wheel?" Well, we're not.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to know that, that school districts, Jim knows better than anybody, the districts with the school district encompass three communities, basically, right?
Yeah. You're elected by area at large, but, but you represent a certain area. Kind of an odd thing, but...
Which is totally different than what we're looking at, I think. But I, I think having, and I'm sure that's an easy thing to give the committee, is that the water district boundaries, and I assume that that will have the numbers in their population as well. Who knows?
If they have those population numbers, then we can include that, but if they don't have the 2010 population numbers, it's not something that we would be working to, to provide, unless directed by staff. But the Mesa would have an idea of what their population is, and again, too, there's usually two different populations. We do work with water districts a lot. We didn't work on their redistricting project or anything like that, but there's your agency boundary, and then there's your service boundary, and those two may also not match. So sometimes, there's a lot of information on their service boundary, their service area, not necessarily the agency. So it could be two different things.
Good to know. Thank you.
And the list of FAQs get longer.
If I'm not mistaken, I think the school district is in the process of doing what we're doing, to have it be represented by a district, you know, not unlike the water district. But to date, it hasn't gone through yet, but they are working on it.
I have a question. Are the census block groups, like, bound to maybe dividing, or do you have to work within those?
I'm going to switch back to, the census blocks are the geography that's lower than these. There's several hundred of them within the district. So when it comes to a public participation kit, it's very difficult to have people assign 200 and create maps, and you'd have to print out like 10 different ones and tile them to be able to see all of the numbers. These are, some of these are consolidated block groups, because, for example, oops, down in these little corners in here, there were some detachment, because the block, the census blocks and the census block groups are not designed for districting purposes. They're designed to count people and areas, and they're very specific in how those boundaries are created. The blocks are just that, groups of census blocks nested into census block groups. We can divide some of these in the sense of, as long as we're following the census block boundaries, but we cannot divide the census blocks, because we'd have to guess where the people are. So this is a general type of thing. If somebody provided us a map and say, they split, say, this big one down here, we would do the best we could to follow that boundary, as long as we were following the census blocks, but this is kind of a general one, but at least following these to be able to do that. Some of the census blocks are just, if you think some of these look crazy, yeah, you wouldn't believe what, what the census blocks look like. So again, it's just, they're supposed to follow jurisdictional boundaries. They don't necessarily follow district boundaries. And then the block groups, we consolidated those, because it was just the ones that are within the district, so...
Would it be possible for the public to see all the census blocks in a map form, just so that there's transparency?
We could. We could do one. It would just be very big, and it could only be made in a PDF format, because it would basically be a huge wall map to be legible. And with that, too, we probably would not do the numbering like this, because the census block is actually a 10-digit ID, and so these are not the census block group IDs. We've just numbered them for ease of reference. It could be, they're usually 10-digit IDs, so we can do that.
Other questions for Deborah, or?
Just wanted to confirm. So we're creating five districts, because we have five directors, and each of those districts will be selected by, I mean, sorry, a director will be selected by a district.
Right. So if we use the map that looked like this, so only the population that resides within Director Division Two would elect a board member from, that would have to live in Division Two?
Yeah, I think it's interesting to note also that when we develop and decide on where the district's boundaries are going to be, we don't all disappear and now we elect five people. Three of us are up for reelection, for example, this year. So our terms would go from 2018 to 2022. The other two directors who are up for reelection in 2020, their districts would be up for reelection, would be up for election. So this whole process is going to take, simple math, six years, before we get to a true five representative, you know, one for each district. It's a process. It's going to, it's no different than what's happening with our city council. You know, this time, I think there are...
Seven.
They've chosen seven, but four of them?
Six and one.
Six and one.
Yeah, six districts and a directly elected mayor, but all, six of those aren't going to change in 2018.
Right. And then to add to that, the registrar of voters needs to have information somewhere around 125 days before the election. So these, you will not be finished with this process to take effect for the November 2018 elections. These would take effect for your November 2020 elections. So it's actually, yeah, it's going to be, and then you have to stagger, and these are all numbered, say, one through five, but the numbers of the divisions can change. You will do an offset, just like your president mentioned, three and two, and some, usually it's odds and evens, but it would have to be decided what those sequencing would be and what the number, the numbering of the divisions would be.
Okay. Other questions for Deborah?
So I know you're asking for input from all of us and everybody in the public. Are you going to come up with what you, as a demographer, would recommend based on the information that you have, in addition to what everybody else comes up with, or how, how is that going to work? Because you know a lot more about this than the community at large, I think it's fair to say. But how are we going to most effectively use your information and compile it with the other items that we come up with?
It's up to you as a board, or you as a district, or as a committee. If you want me to provide you with either a sample map or a proposal based on all the information collected, I can do that. But my primary job is to provide you with the tools that you need to be able to draw a map that's for your agency and for your boundaries. So I'm not here to say, "This is what I think that you should do." I'm here to go with your direction. So if you want me to do that, then I can do that. We definitely want to see what we get. If we got a bunch of ideas and no true plans, then I'm sure I would be the first one to be looked at to say, "Please come up with at least one option for us."
What are my options?
My understanding is that the CAC will have a recommendation that you will provide to the board, and then the board has the final decision.
Again, identical to what the city council did.
And if you want us to do one, then that can be one of your ideas. You can say, whether it's the public providing a comment, or the, your committee, the CAC, they could say, "We would like the demographer to provide us with a sample plan," or one or two, or whatever.
One other question. Is there any precedent for people considering an increase or a decrease to the number of directors at a time like this?
Yeah.
Or is that generally considered off limits?
No, it's, it's, you can absolutely do that, because you don't have, it's not like a city council where you have and really can directly elect a mayor. You, special districts would typically, and school districts would typically stick with odd numbers off their board. Wouldn't go down to three. Usually, five is the minimum, but depending on the size, up to seven or nine. But again, it's a fairly small district, so if you were going to change that, it would, seven would still be a large number to do that, too. But stick with odd numbers.
Deborah, did you say, on, go to 26, page 26, did you say we could go in here and try to create districts?
Right. So what you'd want to do is you want to start with the, the draft map like this, the sample map, and, you know, use a pencil
Yeah.
and start to draw things, and then go to the Excel file. And if you want, we can show you. We can pull up that actual Excel file. And then you just start with the second column there. You have the yellow columns, which is what you're going to enter, but the second column is the block group ID, and then you just find the ID, and you put either Director Division One, Two, Three, or Five in each of those, and then it will tally at the top and tell you.
Okay. Thank you. And that will be on the website.
Yes.
Okay. I think this is part of the agenda. We've, we've had a presentation. We've received the comments. Is there any other comments or any other thoughts? Mr. Mosier, you'd like to speak from the public?
I'd like to.
Oh, go ahead.
One thing I think that we need to be aware of is that when we're looking at these different zones, you got to look and see what's contained in those zones. For instance, when we first looked at this, what, a week ago, the zone I would have been representing, and it was just, it was just a sample thing. It's nothing done in concrete, but there was one high school in my, in my area, and it just wasn't a balanced thing at all, and there was only like two elementary schools. It was almost like, "Why do you even need anybody there?" But, but the point I'm getting at is, if there is a hot button or a priority that you want to see incorporated into whatever, you know, geographic area, you need to be cognizant of that and, and use that as a criteria if you choose.
I want to hear a question while I'm at my...
Yes.
Do you need a comment to?
Go ahead. Oh, answer the mic, please.
What my question is, is the sanitation district provides a service to the community. So those services, those services must be in, for instance, pumps, yards, things like that. Seemingly would be a consideration. For instance, if you had multiple pumping stations under one district and none under another district, would that be of a consideration that we would need to know?
I think that's one of those things that you should either discuss as a committee, or it can be, you know, listed on a, on the idea form type of thing, of things to consider.
That's a good point. I think it'd be worthwhile, then, to have the committee, if we could send out the map that shows the pump stations. It's a little... map that shows the pump stations, it's a little, because of what we're limited to with county and pumping into it, for example, where I live, there are almost a quarter, more than that, probably six of the pump stations are in my area where I live, because I live right next to the riverbed, so that, you need to see that, Tom, I think that's a really good point, but just bear in mind that we're kinda constricted with what the county requires. So, but yeah, I'd encourage all of you to take a look at that, we'll have Nolani send that out.
That's a topography issue.
It's a topography issue, right.
Also, you need to be aware that there's unincorporated areas that we serve, and so you have to consider that, too.
Which could change at some point. Go ahead, Mike.
Conversely, there's large areas of commercial zones that would serve, that the district doesn't serve for solid waste, that wouldn't include residents.
Right. If we were just a sewer district, it might be a little easier than the fact that we'd do a multiple purpose. Okay, at this point in the meeting, I'm gonna open it up for public comment, so members of the public can give input to all of you, and we do have a member of the public who's raised his hand. Mr. Mosher, if you'd take the podium, please.
Thank you, President Schaefer, and members of the committee, my name is Jim Mosher, I'm a resident of Newport Beach, I live in, on your map, Consolidated Census Block Group 63. I had a couple of comments or questions. One, since we heard that the blocks that are drawn on here are not actually census blocks, but groups of census blocks, and we heard that the district boundary doesn't necessarily respect the census blocks, I'm wondering if the numbers shown in these things around the borders of the district are accurate numbers, because perhaps an entire census block was not in or out of the district? So, is there any possibility the numbers are not quite accurate around the edges of the map? It's question number one. Question number two, the map has these blocks, which we've heard were somewhat arbitrarily chosen, a combination of census blocks that widely different in population, they go from two, I can see, in the one numbered 20, up to four and a half thousand in the one numbered 35. So, there's vast numbers differences in the population, and I'm, I think it might be helpful for the committee to understand what the rationale was behind why these blocks were drawn, and the size they are, and such variation in population.
Deborah, can you use that one?
Next comment I have is, the Excel spreadsheet is kinda good, I guess, it's useful for the, trying to get equal numbers of people, population in the different groups. Is there not some kind of computer application, though, that could just online show the map, and people could just click on the blocks, that would add up the numbers for them, so that they really simplify the process for the committee to work on? And then the remaining comment I had is, kinda tagging on to what you just heard, the idea of dividing a governmental agency into regions of equal population makes a whole lot of sense for something like a city, which is called a general purpose local agency. This is a special district whose purpose is to spend money coming from ratepayers. So, the five board members actually represent, not citizens, but they are here representing the ratepayers and how their money will be spent. And some of the rate, the ratepayers in a special district are actually property owners, rather than the citizen residents who live here, and ideally, if this was not being stimulated by the letter the district got, the most logical way of dividing a special district would be into areas of equal revenue, so that each director is representing kind of an equal financial part of the state in the district. And while you may be driven by population here, if you had a choice, something should go one way or another, it would seem to me that you would wanna know how much trash revenue, how much sewer revenue is coming from each of these blocks, so that you could try to equalize that as much as possible, if the population could go one way or the other. So, those are my comments, thank you.
Deborah, did you have some answers for that, clarification?
So, okay, this is, this'll work, too. So, the census has, releases data by census block, which for Orange County, there's about 36,000 blocks. When they ID each of those blocks, they only provide the ID of the city, which they call census place, or a CDP, which is called a census designated place, so in unincorporated areas in the county. So, they have 34 IDs for the 34 cities in Orange County, and then they have IDs for the CDPs or census designated places. So, Sunset Beach, which is now, has been annexed by Huntington Beach, you have Midway City by Westminster, Los Flores, Cota de Casa, those are census designated places or CDPs. So, the census blocks have an ID specifically for places, cities, incorporated cities, towns, or CDPs. And then for special districts, or school districts, they don't have an ID, so you have to figure that out by taking the boundaries of your district and saying, okay, is this block in this district or not? The block groups, and with the blocks, they have very specific geographies and tools that you can use to identify the boundaries of a census block. So, it's usually a street, it's gotta be some physical feature that doesn't change, that it can be tracked over time. Yes, I know that cities can be realigned, but they do look at those every 10 years, and we actually underwent a process where we participate in looking at those block boundaries. But those are only recommendations that you provide to the Bureau, and the Bureau makes the decisions on the boundaries. The block groups that you're seeing here are the block groups as designed by the Census Bureau. So, they combine a number of blocks, and the block groups have population thresholds that they're looking for. For block groups, generally, they're looking for populations of what they say is about 4,000 to 8,000 people. That can vary greatly, it can vary from two, as you see in the corner, up to 10,000. It just depends on the boundaries, again, you're looking at topography, geography, natural features, it can be power lines, it can be different freeways, streets, but they want to have these boundaries that are recognizable, and they try and keep them stable over time. So, you will have populations where some of the block groups will have seemingly high populations, some of them will be lower. In areas that have high growth, they will consolidate those over decennial since, over those 10 years. But these block group boundaries were actually those that reflect the actual census block group boundaries. The ones like this one in the corner that have the two, it is a larger block group that goes outside of the district, but we're only showing the area that is within the district and the population that's within the district, based on those block group population. So, we're, again, providing that information to you. We will provide those block group, or excuse me, the block level population map that has the total population for the whole district, that you can see each of those block boundaries, so.
These boundaries are set, I think it's important, we didn't set these boundaries.
Oh, no.
This was set by the federal government.
Right.
So, we don't have any control of that. The question, one of the things that I wanna get some clarification, maybe from staff, is that the idea of basing this on revenue, that would be extreme, I don't think legally we can do that, can we, Alan?
Can I ask that question?
Yes, please.
The idea had some merit, but we're a district that's elected by voters, and every voter gets a vote, whether they're a renter or a landowner. There are some districts, like assessment districts, where it's a weighted ballot, based on the worth or the value of your property. We're not that kind of a district, but if we were, that would make a lot of sense, but we're a district that you're elected by the voters.
So, this district, this divisioning has to be controlled by voter?
Yes.
And again, just the primary goal, the number one goal that outweighs every other criteria that you can look at, is as nearly equal in its population as can be. So, you're not gonna get 0%, I mean, it would basically be a miracle if you were able to do that. So, there's gonna be some deviation, whether you're using the block level, or whether you're using the block group level here. Again, we're, these tools were provided so that you could have some input, and not necessarily spend dozens of hours trying to calculate everything. The reason why also, there's not an online mapping tool, is it costs usually tens of thousands of dollars to create and have all that background information, to create a secure server, so none of the data is messed with, to be able to receive that information, to have enough bandwidth, so that everybody who wants to go on it, there's a lot of things involved. I'm not aware of any, any agency below the Board of Supervisors in Orange County that has an online mapping tool that allows you to assign the districts. There may be some online mapping tools that allow you to look at the proposed maps and see where you're located on the map, but not to draw the boundaries.
Thank you. Okay, if there are no other public comments, I'm gonna go to item D on your agenda, which is oral communications and director comments. We'll start with our directors, anybody have any comments?
Good presentation.
Yeah, very good, thank you, Deborah, very much. Jim?
I'd just like to personally thank all of the participants on this committee. It really shows where your heart is, and you wanna see a better Costa Mesa, and see it done right, and thank you for your interest and for your help.
Yeah, I think all five of us echo that, we, this is time out of your schedules, and like Jim said, we're trying to get things done the right way, and we appreciate all your input, so. Any of the committee have any comments?
Just a question, kinda going back to what Sue said, what she said, I was thinking the same thing. Is Mesa Water required to change their districting?
Well, according to what Deborah said, they need to look at it every 10 years.
I wondered if we can, like, kinda what Sue said, try to just do a Mesa large, if they're not having any problems with their districts, we could just use what they have.
Again, we're different. We are very different.
That doesn't work.
We're different.
The service area, if we were the same exact makeup as them, it would make some sense, but we're not. And we do have people from out of the city that we represent, so it'd be really difficult to do that.
Just a thought.
No, it's a good thought. Sue?
Just to clarify, I don't think we should do it the way Mesa Water is doing it. I just think that we need to provide information somewhere on the website that explains why we're not doing it like Mesa Water, because a lot of people, I think, will wanna know that, and somebody's gonna wanna know why we're not doing it like the city council. And again, we're different, and the districting is different and all of that, but I think if we eliminate, if we provide as much information as we can in terms of questions that we think people may ask, where they can just find the answer, and not throw anybody into a tailspin, I think.
Thank you.
So, the services are all different.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Okay, no other questions or comments, then I'm going to adjourn this meeting. We'll see all of you bright and early, no, bright and late, next Wednesday at 6 o'clock to 6. Again, thank you for your participation, and we will see you then.